It is seven PM, we'll call tonight's meeting to order, June the eleventh, twenty nineteen. We are in a regular session. And I guess my phone thought I said something that it needed to respond to, it started talking. I don't know what I said. Okay. Uh, we do have a quorum, uh, and Councilmember Fleury is out of the country. Was gonna, gonna join us via Skype but is ill, so he will not be here tonight. In just a minute, I will ask everyone to stand, will be led in an invocation by our acting town manager Carol, and then, then be led in pledges to the American flag and then the Texas flag by Councilmember Grosso. Please stand.
Would you pray with me? Lord, we thank you so much for the weather that you've given us and this opportunity to serve you that we all have. Uh, God, we just ask that you watch over our first responders, our volunteers that are here tonight, Lord, and all of our staff and all of the family that they have at home. Uh, look over them while we're away from them, God, and protect them. God, we just ask for your wisdom and purpose to come through this meeting tonight, and we just ask for your blessing on it. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. We have one speaker signed up, Mr. Phil Malazo, I probably said that wrong. Please come forward, state your name and your address into the microphone, and then you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Phil Malazo, I'm at four oh three Ramsey Trail, uh, in Canterbury Hills. And I appreciate the town council giving us the opportunity to bring, uh, a concern and an issue that we don't really know how to address or resolve at this time. We have a severe flooding issue on Ramsey Trail for all the homeowners on the west side of the street, but it also transitions across to the east side of the street in many cases. Some of the concerns also are at the corner of Abbott and Fisher. It, when it rains, it forms almost like a fishing pond where those two intersections meet. Uh, we have addressed this, um, to the Ashton Woods and First Texas Home Builders, and also the Golf Course, uh, the Country Club, Trophy Club, Trophy Club's Country Club. But, uh, we haven't been able to get the, the two parties or three parties to give us direction or resolution. So we just wanted to bring it to the town council's attention and hopefully look for some guidance in the future. We know there's not gonna be a resolution today.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Alright, Holly, I don't see anyone else asked to speak?
No, Mayor.
Alright, we will then move on. It is time for announcements and reports. Item number one, receive acting town manager Carol's update and provide input regarding the following. Uh, PD thirty and American Heart Association Mission Life Award. Chief Carol.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure to give you, to report that the construction on the PD thirty site continues on schedule, uh, with framing on the north side of the Byron complex and the retail spaces. Additional efforts are being performed by our staff in order to maintain compliance with the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. And additionally, PD thirty, uh, has amended plat, has, that was requested by Encore for the addition of the utility easements and the maintenance of the retaining wall between the townhomes and the Aloft Hotel, was approved at Thursday night's P and Z meeting. I'd also like to announce that the Fire Department was awarded the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline Silver Award for Excellence in Pre-Hospital Care for Emergencies such as heart attacks and strokes. Our department's treatment protocols, procedures, and twenty nineteen run data were submitted for review in February, and we met the highest of award standards. It's my pleasure to present our EMS coordinator and shift captain Shane Beck, and one of our EMS field trainers Eric Sampson, who are integral in working with our department as we continue to push for excellence in the service that we provide to customers. Tonight, we also have Fire Marshal Gary Carkin with us, Captain Gary Sykes, and the sea shift crew with us to receive the award. And I'll take any questions from council.
Counsel, any questions? Well, congratulations, uh, and leaders for doing that. So we have pro, a, award and a plaque. So I'm gonna come down and present that, and we'll get some pictures.
We plan on more. Yes, sir. That's right. That's right.
So come on up here and we'll present. Chief, you wanna turn around too? And you wanna hold that, I'll let you. Eric, come on over here. Okay, we're gonna go back here by the seal and all of everybody. Well, we made it through that, and there was no call. They were still here to receive it. We are on the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, does anyone wish to remove item two or three and consider separately?
Motion to approve consent agenda items two and three.
Second. Mayor Pro Tem Jensen moved, Councilman Bone seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Item number four, consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing June the twelfth, twenty nineteen, as Trophy Club Women's Club Day and Trophy Club, and provide an effective date. It is proclamation twenty nineteen fifteen, and I will recognize Mayor Pro Tem Jensen to read the proclamation and make a motion.
A proclamation of the town of Trophy, the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing June twelfth, twenty nineteen, as Trophy Club Women's Club Day and Trophy Club, and providing an effective date. Whereas, the Trophy Club Women's Club was established by residents in nineteen eighty with the mission of charity, friendship, and community. And whereas, the Trophy Club Women's Club was incorporated on December second, nineteen ninety-nine, and gained five oh one C-three status in November of two thousand two. And whereas, the Trophy Club Women's Club support, support of the Town of Trophy Club events, including Pet Fest, Easter Egg Hunt, Parade of Patriots, Back to Nature, and Keep Trophy Club Wild. And whereas, the Trophy Club Women's Club has grown from twenty members to over three hundred to date. And whereas, the Trophy Club Women's Club holds annual fundraisers with the Christmas Home Tour and semi-annual garage sale. And whereas, the Trophy Club Women's Club has provided over five hundred thousand dollars in scholarships and grants. And whereas, the Trophy Club Women's Club members represent women, young and old, married or single, mothers, grandmothers, employed, retired, entrepreneurs, and active in other church and civic entities. And whereas, the Trophy Club Women's Club partnered with the Byron Nelson High School to present scholarships to graduating seniors in twenty ten, and is having a celebration event on June twelfth, twenty nineteen, to honor this year's recipients. And whereas, the Town of Trophy Club is grateful to the Trophy Club Women's Club and all they do to promote goodwill in the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim June twelfth, twenty nineteen, as Trophy Club Women's Club Day. Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Does anyone from the Women's Club want to make a statement? Alright, Jeanette, please come to the microphone, state your name and the address, please.
I'm Jeanette Tiffany, I'm forty-four Cypress Court. And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you to recognize that the Trophy Club Country, uh, Trophy Club Women's Club has a significant role in the Town of Trophy Club as you continue to grow and meet the needs of your residents. And we really feel like that we are an organization that helps to do that in a significant way. Thank you for recognizing us. We look forward to partnering with you as we have, and we really consider you as a partner, as we do Byron Nelson High School and others that we work with to meet our mission and our goals. Thank you, and thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel, all in favor of approving the proclamation, please show your hands. It is unanimous, it is approved. So let me, I got a proclamation to present you, and let's go back here by the, the, uh, come on, Eric. By the, uh, seal. And so let's get the presidents, co-presidents, and then we'll get everybody. Alright, item number five, receive the mayor's state of the town address and discussion of same. I shouldn't have read discussion of same.
Oh, boy.
The last twelve months since my last mayor's report, it's been a year of constant improvements in many ways in Trophy Club. We've been in our new town hall and police building for over two years, and it has proven to be functional building for not only staff, but for residents who use the various public spaces from time to time. Our town has grown, and we are all working to engage our new residents to interface with the town and become involved in various ways to learn what it really means that Trophy Club is a great place to call home, and it's not just a slogan. We all want a quality of life here to be exemplary. Our characteristic of community is diversity, and that attribute is certainly evident here as we reap the synergistic effort of the different people, ages, thought, education, religions, and ideas, and so on. We are beneficiaries of this diversity and lifeblood. Building community is not the sole job of elected officials, it is shared by all of us. I appreciate your phone calls, your emails, your texts, and your personal input. The past twelve months has at times been tumultuous, with council resignations, a special election, a general election, and departure of our town manager. And we'll be holding another special election in September to replace the council place four seat vacated by Councilmember Tim Kurtz. The council has started receiving applications to fill the town manager position. And just recently, we've received the resignation of our Director of Administrative Services, with this Jonathan Phillips, who is leaving to work for another city, along with the resignation of our Finance Manager, John Zurgisky. And John is here tonight with her, and, with us, and, um, Jonathan is on vacation. We're gonna miss both of them, and we wish them the best as they go to their new careers. They've been excellent employees, and John, I forgot to look up how long you've been here. How long have you been here? Five and a half years. So thank you for your service, John, and everything that you've done for us. Residential growth has been a driving aspect for much of what we've been focused on for the past ten years. We currently have a total of twelve vacant residential lots available, compared to forty-three at this time last year, with twenty-four single-family homes under construction. That was accurate as of noon today. It could have changed. We didn't know that. You never know about these things. Our average home appraised value for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen was a little over four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Compared to today, it looks like to be four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. For twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year, we have a total taxable value property of one point eight billion. We have an increase of seven point two four percent, or we had an increase of seven point two four percent in twenty eighteen. Uh, that was over the year twenty seventeen, with almost twenty-six point four million of this from new properties. Our preliminary appraised debt, data for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year has a taxable value of one point nine four billion, which represents a little over a twelve percent increase, and we are in week eight of the appraisal process. Odds are, that will go down, it always tends to do so, but we forecast that the increase will be somewhere between six and seven percent over the previous year. Much of the news this year has been related to home appraisals and is focused on the fact that North Texas is experiencing phenomenal growth, and therefore, home appraisals are increasing. And when municipalities set their tax rate, citizens feel the financial strain. Over the past seven years, the council has strived to keep spending under control, and we've also lowered the tax rate each year. And our current tax rate is just a little above point four four six for twenty nineteen. The council just approved at our May twenty-eighth council meeting a one percent residential property homestead exemption to be responsive to our citizens and the effort to help them with their raising, with their rising property values. For council and staff, this exemption will result in a reduction of property tax revenue of about what equates to a half cent tax rate. So we will be challenged into how do we cut the budget to allow for this. We received our fiscal year twenty eighteen audit report, and in twenty eighteen, we were once again received what is called an unmodified opinion with no significant deficiencies. I know unmodified opinions sound strange, but that's what they give if you're okay. Uh, the twenty eighteen unassigned fund balance for the general fund ended at four point nine million, compared to four point four in twenty seventeen. And the twenty eighteen balance is forty-seven percent of the total general fund expenditures. This puts us in a very comfortable position to have cash in the bank to operate, even in maybe lean times. A significant action by council last budget cycle was to create a equip, equipment replacement fund and allocate money to this action. It currently has almost three hundred thousand dollars in the fund, and that's not including transfers that will be made this year that are in the budget. Over the past four years, council has focused on bringing new restaurants and shopping to town. Last year, we did celebrate the opening of Holiday Inn with its restaurant and bar adding to our tax base and amenities for our residents and guests. And in the next few months, we will be enjoying H.G. Supply's new concept across the street. And you notice I no longer say a date, it's next few months. Those people that ask, H.G. Supply has been expanding and very successful, and opened in downtown Dallas a concept called Hero. It opened just before it looked like H.G. Supply and Trophy Club was gonna be finished, and so they're not doing both at the same time, which is probably a wise decision. There has been additional retail business come to town over the last year, including a Marco's Pizza and a ship shop next to Seven Eleven along one fourteen. In twenty eighteen, the fiscal year, we did receive payment for many of the required building permits and fees for Trophy Club Town Center Development, or better known sometimes as PD thirty. And as most of you've seen, many of the roads for the development are completed, along with a parking garage for the apartments, which will be surrounded by the apartments. In addition, many of the retail commercial buildings are under construction. Neither the planned hotel or townhomes have submitted final plans for their construction. Capital improvements for street reconstruction and drainage projects required us to issue four point six million certificates of obligation bonds for these projects. And because of our double A-plus bond rating, we received an outstanding interest rate. These funds will be used for projects going through twenty twenty-one, and include roads and drainage on Phoenix Drive, Meadow Brook Lane, Sundance Court, and parts of Indian Creek and Trophy Club Drive. In the way of grants, the Park and Recs Department received over three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for repair and improvements in Trophy Club Park, and the Fire Department received over two hundred thousand dollars in various projects, including reimbursement for our assist, assistance with Hurricane Harvey. The town continues to receive recognition for the services we provide, along with our choice of lifestyle. Through the efforts of our police department, we recently received the Safe Wise Award as the fifth safest town in Trophy Club. Officers Crum and Herna, Hernandez were recognized with life-saving awards as a result of their efforts with a traumatic injury call at Trophy Club Park. And our SRO program with Northwest Independent School District received an Outstanding Service Award. The Fire Department was awarded the American Medical Association Mission Lifeline Award, which just happened. I'm real car, aren't I? And, um, our communications director, this is Jill Lynn, recently received an Excellence Award from the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers for her work on the production and communication of our annual Fourth of July event. Jill is here, or she was, right over there. Wave your hand, Jill, so people can see you. Let's give her a round of applause for that. And Mr. James Edwards was named Municipal Human Resources Association Chairperson for twenty nineteen, and he is our HR director. The Trophy Club Police Explorer Team won first place in the Boy Scouts of America Police Competition, and the explorers have a Byron Nelson student living in Southampton, England, representing our Police Department Explorer Program. And Chief Carol was awarded the position of Vice President in the NEFDA Board. Congratulations, chief, on that appointment. It is our long and deep history of volunteerism that we as a town find community where we experience quality of life and appreciation of those aspects. This past year, we've enjoyed having a person out in our lobby to greet those coming to town hall. Thanks to all those who have volunteered, their time to sit out front and make people feel welcome is appreciated. I'd be amiss if I did not express the appreciation of the entire council and myself toward our town staff and employees who work hard to serve our citizens. Now let's look at the future. Many of you already know that in May twenty twenty, the office of mayor will be up for election, and I will be term limited out. So after thirteen years of public service on the town council and mud board, I'm planning on retiring and being, and no longer being, an elected official in Trophy Club. The town charter calls for the mayor to annually set out needs and goals for our town. So after giving this much thought, I have narrowed it to eight goals, just like last year. Number one, which is pretty much the same as number one last year, as with our last year, continuing to maintain the highest standards of safety in our town and residents, businesses, and students is at the top of the list. That's surely a challenge, and I'm glad to see the addition of more experienced senior leadership within both Fire and Police Departments. Number two, strive to set our twenty nineteen twenty fiscal tax year tax rate equal to or below the effective tax rate. We accomplished that task in the last two years, and very few municipalities in Texas have set their tax rate at or below the effective tax rate. If property values increase, which looks like they are, in theory, the tax rate could go down. Two years ago was the first time in our history where we set the tax rate or below the effective tax rate. It's a good challenge for us, I think, to look at always. And so we'll be setting goals and going through planning sessions in the next few months where we develop our fiscal budget for this next fiscal year. It goes without saying that we need to hire a qualified town manager to continue to lead the town and focus on priorities set by the council. That was number three. Number four, with the future opening of H.G. Supply Company in a few months, we need to begin planning on how we might use the land between town hall and breadwinners. Much of it is used for overflow parking for breadwinners at this time. With over, with over three quarters of a million dollars in our hotel occupancy tax fund, we should explore the possibility of constructing a civic center on this land while preserving enough parking to assist breadwinners with their peak parking needs. If it's not a civic center, it surely could be a public space, which facilitates with, uh, facilities, building community, and the enjoyment of open spaces and maybe some arts. Number five, as we, as with last year, we should develop with the mud, elected officials, a detailed plan on how the mud in the town can optimize its assets, services, and operations. Surely, we can become more efficient and, working together, find a long-term plan related to this complicated matter. But let's work together and develop a plan we can execute. And for our council, we recently added to our future agenda list the establishment of a committee to try to work on that. Number six, work with the developers of Trophy Club Town Center, PD thirty, to recruit, recruit high-end businesses and services. Now that construction has started, it is time to step up our efforts to see how we can make the development even better for our citizens. Number seven, work with our neighboring cities and towns on joint projects to benefit our broader communities. As we look at our neighboring communities, sometimes it might be considered a competition. One town gets an office building, another gets a restaurant, others get homes. It's always something changing in our area, and if any of us benefit from it, we all benefit from something new. We all like to go to the restaurants and shops, and we all benefit from the businesses in our area. One of those projects that I've been working on for this past year with Tarrant County, the Town of Westlake, and the City of Southlake is a way to potentially use autonomous vehicles or some other mode of public transportation between our communities and their shopping areas. From my side of it, if I can get people to come from offices in the area to visit our restaurants and our shops, it's a win-win. Number eight, explore the opportunities for civic-focused services, which might include a a senior center and our meeting facilities. I think this coincides and may be parallels to what we want to do with our Annex Building. That's where our old Town Hall is and the old police station. I think we need to look at where we need to provide services to our citizens and where we are lacking. We probably won't all agree in some of that, but nonetheless, we should have those discussions. Our mission as a council is to maintain Trophy Club's standing as a premier residential community and a great place to call home by protecting and promoting the interest of its residents, businesses, and property owners. Each council member has their unique gifts and talents and bring their viewpoints to our meetings to help us make the best decisions as a council. Even though we may disagree at times on a subject, we need to treat each other and staff with the utmost respect and professionalism. To each member of council, I say thank you for your dedication of time and willingness to serve the citizens of Trophy Club. As I close, I hope to begin quarterly citizens' meetings open to all. Look for more information about this in the coming weeks ahead. It's an honor for me to have served you as mayor in this particular time for the last five years. I sincerely appreciate your confidence and support. I believe I speak for the entire council when I express my gratitude to Councilmember Schaffner, who served as Mayor Pro Tem this last year. I want to thank all the staff, thank the citizens for trusting this council and for trusting me. Trusting me helped lead the town into the future. May we be blessed as we work together. Let us strive to go through our next election for place four and the general election in May of 2020 with a new commitment to celebrate our freedoms of choice and do so with respect and courtesy. Sincerely, Mayor Nick Sanders. Did any council members wish to make a statement? It said that last year, too. So, yeah, we'll see if we get to pull that off, right? Anybody else? All right, we will then move on to item number six. Discussion and provide direction to town staff regarding potential items to place on the joint session agenda between Trophy Club Town Council and Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One Board of Directors. So we have in our packet some items for consideration, and the acting town manager Carroll is going to present this item for us.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. The item that you have before you falls within the Town of Trophy Club priorities of administrative and financial services and a goal of exercising fiscal discipline within all town operations. As you're well aware, we have an ILA with the Mud One that requires that we meet with the Town Council in a joint session prior to August 1st of each year to look at and approve the fire budget. This year, the council has agreed to meet on July the 29th at 7:00 PM, and staff is just looking for direction for any items that you'd like to place on the agenda for the joint meeting.
So when you met with the Mud staff, did they have any items that they have presented yet to us?
Not for that meeting, no, sir.
All right. And so we've been having some discussions for the past year with them from time to time, dealing with the Annex Building, where last I heard, they wanted to use part of that building, and all of the things that we have there have not been removed. Is that correct?
That's correct. The auction is underway, but we have not completed that process yet.
And then, of course, the next portion of that is what is the old police building, which I believe still has old stuff in it also.
Yes, sir.
And our objective there is to figure out how maybe we remove that from the property. Is that still the plant?
That's correct, yeah.
As opposed to try to utilize it?
That's correct.
And the other item that I know has been on the discussion list for a while is how we might deal with the what's referred to as the Maintenance Barn, which is over by the Country Club's maintenance area, which is a facility that we occupy 100% now, although it was built by the Mud on Mud property years ago. Am I missing anything that was part of the items that we have been going through discussion on?
No, sir.
Counsel, do you remember any that I've missed? Okay, so, Counsel, I don't know that you've had a chance to give a lot of thought as to what else you might want to see on the agenda, but this is a time where you can ask questions and discuss that, make suggestions. Obviously, those items that I mentioned are ongoing, and there has been some discussion about how those properties might be dealt with, either purchased by other entities or traded in some fashion. And at the same time, I would like to add to that discussion future planning of the replacement of the fire truck, to be ready for that when it happens financially. And I know the Mud, at least at one point, was setting aside funds for that, but it seems to me at some point it might be prudent to be able to place that under the town. But in order to do that, the town has to understand what that debt obligation might be and be prepared for that, so it's not something that can easily happen without it. And for a while, I think on our future agenda list, we have had some items that dealt with acquisition and our disposal of property. So anybody else have anything that they would like to see as part of the discussion? There's only so much you can accomplish in a meeting, but I think that was the purpose Councilmember Schaffner had of your future agenda item, right?
Well, I'm on the queue there.
It's supposed to ding at.
I'm gonna have to get a laugh.
Where's my Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm just laughing at you.
Philip, you have floor.
If Nick mentioned it in his State of the Union or whatever.
State of the Town.
State of the Town, that we have it on future agenda as what we termed a Sunset Committee, but it could be any type of term. It may be good to reach out to the Mud General Manager to see if the Mud has an interest in that, and if they do, then perhaps each year at the joint meeting, that would be a good time to, you know, to pick members. If it changes, we can just make that a standing type agenda item at that joint meeting. So you may reach out and just see if they have an interest, and if they do, let's form that committee at that time.
Okay. Eric, did you remember?
I did. I was gonna say the same thing Philip did.
Oh, okay. See, I did at least notice you were there.
Yes, sir.
Then you disappear.
And I think that goes to what you're saying, Nick, as far as if you form, if we do happen to form a committee, then perhaps we can look at things where we can streamline operations and make it something much better for the citizens or at least, you know, a savings to the citizens.
Anybody else on council have a comment or a question? I do see that Mud Director Steve Flynn is in our audience, and he was kind of raising his hand, I think. Steve, you want to come to the microphone?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, Steve Flynn, 417 Ramsey. My only comment, Philip, is I would suggest highly you get Greg as the president of the Mud and maybe that direction rather than the General Manager. He'll start with Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this item? All right, thank you.
In that case, it may be good, Nick, if you reached out to Greg and coordinated that.
Item number seven, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the June 25th, 2019 council agenda and items on the Town Council Future Agenda Items List. So the first thing you have is our next meeting is June the 25th, 2019. I am going to be joining the meeting remotely, and Mayor Pro Tem Jensen will be conducting the meeting. So my first question was, are you still going to do the workshop at 6:00 that day? And so does council want to do the workshop at 6:00 with the meeting starting at 7:00? Nobody has a comment?
Well, I'm good with it, but it's kind of up to you if they can, I guess, move it.
I'm not sure about the Skype aspects. I think you have to be visible to people, so that's something that would have to be worked out if I'm going to join remotely in that particular case. And do we have, I think at our last meeting, we talked about some topics, but I'm not sure, Wade, if you were communicated what those topics were at this point.
Yes, sir. My understanding is we're going to look at the wayfinding signs and the entryway monumentation were the topics for that meeting.
All right.
It says Sheldon Park, too. What is Sheldon Park? Where's that at?
That is the park on Sheldon Road or Drive.
That's the one in Canterbury Hills?
One in Canterbury Hills, yeah.
I thought that was Sanders Park, so.
It wasn't. You read that wrong, Captain.
Yeah.
All right, so you have before you that tentative agenda. Does anybody see anything on the agenda that you have some questions about or have something you want to seriously try to get to this agenda as opposed to in the future? Notice we have some five-year capital improvement projections that we'll be dealing with, along with potentially dealing with PD-30 townhomes, and we're going to have some more discussion about that in executive session. Anybody else have questions or things you want to add? All right, hearing none, then we'll go to page 333, which is our future agenda list. We have the item that's been there for a while about the Mud and its aspects, the Annex Building, Maintenance Barn, and that kind of thing. We have entryway monumentation and landscaping, which we're talking about at the workshop, and possible action between the town and EDC 4B regarding long-range planning and use of the parcel between Breadwinners and Trophy Club Town Hall, which I put as an objective for us to look at. There's the Charter Review Commission, which we still would need to make appointments to and convene if we're going to do so, along with, as Philip mentioned, what we call the Sunset Committee with the Mud that we'll talk to about. And then there was an item that said, look at some use of turf fields at Independence Park, et cetera. So anybody have something they'd like to add to the future agenda list at this time? I don't see anyone wanting to do so. We will then move on. All right, so it brings us down to item number eight, and so we're going to convene in the executive session in just a moment, once I read just a couple of things. Item?
Nick, can I interrupt you?
Yes, sure, Philip.
It probably, it may be a good idea to have an agenda item to discuss some of the items that have been coming to us as far as what the gentleman spoke about today.
Drainage?
Right. Just because I was not aware that there were problems in Canterbury Hills, so it may be good to have some kind of overview, some kind of agenda item, just to...
There are some other areas of town that have reported some draining issues, a house that's along Trophy Club Drive that's getting water from their back door neighbor, and then there are...
There's the one in Hogan's that I sent you the video.
Yep, and then some major drainage issues that have come from PD-30 through Hogan's Glen.
Right.
All of which are different topics that staff is looking at. And so let's give Tommy and staff a little bit to look at this drainage issue at Canterbury Hills. You sent an email, didn't you, sir, about that?
Yes, I did.
And have you talked to Tommy Uzi yet?
No, sir.
Okay, so he's the gentleman in the gray hair who's facing you now. It's not Tony, because he's the only one that doesn't have gray hair. But it could be me, because I do have gray hair and I am facing you, okay.
But, you know, we could put that on future agenda just to give the staff time to kind of put something together, but I think it would be good to have an understanding of where these areas' problems are.
All right, good. Now, did we, I know that we authorized spending more money updating our drainage plan. Is that finished? I don't recall.
They're still in the middle of that right now. It's gonna take a couple of months to get all that completed.
Okay. So let's add maybe to future agenda list, Wade, where we have some discussion and appropriate direction dealing with drainage issues in town. Maybe that's a way to put it. Schaffner's adding that. Anybody object to that? All right, seeing no one, we will then add that. All right, so now I'll try to...
Actually, I actually...
All right, Michael.
So my question is, I guess, is the, even we got a little crosswalks, and I'm not sure if that's something that you've had a chance to take a look at. I think there's an email about concerns about flashers and a crosswalk there from Highlands, I think Trophy Lake Drive. If I'm not mistaken, it's like six lanes wide, and I know that that resident is actually a neighbor down the street, and the location of the resident isn't concerning me, but what concerns me is the demographics that I know that that person's daughter is at. And if you look at the demographics of the town, a lot of the kids, there's two spike numbers, if I'm not mistaken, the kids that are going to Lakeview and Tobeck that are going to the fourth grade and those that are going from the seventh grade, the sixth grade to the seventh grade. My point is, is that that's a timeframe where kids are getting pretty active, and parents are letting that leash a little longer, letting kids cross that crosswalk there, and I know that there's at least four, if not five, other emails right behind that one. So I just want to give you a chance to take a look at that. We don't have to add it now. I know you might have time to respond to it and investigate it, but I just wanted to throw that out there because I know that there's other requests coming behind it.
Right, yeah, that'll be Trophy Club Drive and Highlands.
Yes, sir, yeah.
I talked to Chief about that tonight, who was already aware and had been monitoring that as something to look at, and if we're talking about flashers, which I suspect that's what they're talking about, with some striping, then it is something that we would want to put into our budget to accomplish that task unless we have funds for that at this point. So we'll add that, Wade, to the future agenda list, controlled crossing at Trophy Club Drive and Highlands Road, I guess, as opposed to Drive, not quite sure which it is.
I wouldn't just limit it to that. There may be, I don't know if Patrick has seen other areas that he may want to bring to us, but if you have other areas.
Other people talked to us about it with my home department.
Yeah, I believe that.
Yeah, because we have the, you know, we have the sidewalk going on the opposite side now, so there's got to be some kind of cross if your kid is walking down the sidewalk and then goes across.
So let's expand that future agenda list, Wade, to include other areas potentially of additional crossing, protected crossing. All right? Anybody else, anything else? I'll look at the screen to see if anybody did anything. All right. Item eight, pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene in the executive session to discuss the following. A, Section 551072, deliberate deliberation regarding real property to discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third party. Item one is north of State Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive, and west of the town limits. That does include the area that is PD-30. Item number two, north of State Highway 114, west of Trophy Club Drive, that does include the area where the 7-Eleven, Meet You Anywhere, and the bank are located in that general area. B, Section 551074, personnel matters under Section 1 to discuss or deliberate the appointment evaluation and duties of a public officer or employee. And council, in item number one, will be discussing the Council Finance Subcommittee making appointments to that. And item two, the town manager position, which I mentioned earlier, we have already posted that position on the TML website and receiving some applications related to that. And item C, Section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under subsection 1 to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that a governmental body has received from a business prospect that the government body seeks to have locate state... seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations, and subsection two, to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the town seeks to have locate within the territory of the town. And item one, north of State Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive, and west of the town limits, and that also is specifically related to commercial development on PD-30. It is 7:50? We are in executive session. Council will come to order. It is 9:20 PM, and we are back into regular session. We'll go to item number nine. Consider to take appropriate action regarding appointing three council members to a council subcommittee formed for the purpose of providing fiduciary oversight of the budget as well as providing input regarding the administration of the budget and the budget process. Chair would recognize Councilmember Bone for a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Councilmember Schaffner, Mayor Pro Tem Jensen, and Mayor Sanders to serve on the finance subcommittee.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Sean Bone and a second by Ghorasi. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor show your hands. It is unanimous. All right, item number 10, consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. First item, I would recognize Mayor Pro Tem Eric Jensen for a motion.
Make a motion to approve letter of agreement for mutual access driveway improvements at 91 Trophy Club Drive.
Seconded by Schaffner, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Schaffner. Any discussion?
This is to get the driveway open in front of Meet You Anywhere, access between 7-Eleven, so that everybody understands.
And it's benefiting really all of the people in the various shopping centers around there. That's all right?
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It does pass.
And I'd like, I'd just like to thank staff for working on this. I think that they took our direction and bam, really got on top of it, so thanks.
And just as a point of interest, the agreement being signed, has already been signed by Meet You Anywhere, and we already have estimate from contractor and a potential start date very quickly, right?
That's correct.
All right, so that'll let the citizens kind of know that. All right, the other item is dealing with interim town manager, and I would recognize Councilmember Ghorasi for a motion.
Motion to approve interim town manager position as discussed in executive session.
Second.
All right, motion by Ghorasi, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all those in favor show your hands. It is unanimous. It is, let me just make sure before I adjourn, anything else, counsel, that I needed, that I missed? No?
No.
Okay. 9:20.